Mark Rensel, Osmond Board.
Dave Hammonds, the Head of Osmond.
Brian Eisenhower, Bloomfield Board.
Shane O'Keefe, Bloomfield K-12 Principal.
Craig Bollman, Sporty 12 Principal, Creighton.
Kaye Morrell, Board Member Creighton.
Colleen Farnie, Creighton Board.
Dan Morrell, Creighton Board.
Jeff Jensen, Superintendent Creighton.
Bob Martin, Superintendent for Wausau and Bloomfield.
Brian Way, Creative Wausau Board.
Michael Cum, Wausau Board.
Darren Van Ness, Wausau Board.
Kristi Hallow from the Bloomfield Board.
Chris Johnson, Bloomfield Board.
Rich All, Superintendent Plaineview.
Mike Sylsger, Plaineview.
Jason Ashburn, Plaineview Board.
Steve Musle, Plaineview Board.
Alright, I guess kind of continuing on, these meetings we have opened to the public as stated by the Attorney General. We do not need to follow the Open Meetings Act, however, we have opened these meetings to the public. And so, anybody that is in the public, we do ask that you honor and respect the individuals up here. There is one thing that's really important in these meetings is you bring five districts together to have discussions, is that they're able to have good dialogue, positive dialogue, and that's something that I think we have done over the last several months, is we have been able to get into this room together and have great conversations. And, you know, you bring five districts into one room, you have different philosophies, different ideas, but overall, I think everybody's been able to come to a consensus that we need to do something for kids. And this is completely and without hesitation has focused on what's best for kids. And so, I really commend all these people in this room and the people that have been here previously, keeping it upbeat and on that note. So, I guess with that said, again, there's going to be a lot of things that are maybe said tonight. You know, there's really no right or wrong answers. A lot of this evening is about brainstorming and coming up with different plans and different things that are out there. As you look at the agenda tonight, that agenda was established by a member from each school board, as well as the superintendent. So, as we look to put it together, a lot of things that we're going to see on there is recapping really of where we've been and where we're going. It's, we haven't met in a couple, three months now, and so, where we were at then is, we haven't moved much farther beyond that. And so, tonight again is kind of an opportunity for everybody to meet each other, get re-acclimated to each other and recap where we've at and where we're going. And I think as we look at things, in reality, none of these districts can support itself and we all need each other in the future, whether that's sharing different activities, sharing in-service speakers, or eventually even possibly merging. I think that's something that all of our districts have to look at if we're going to try to provide a quality education to our kids in the future and declining enrollment is something that we all share in common. So, I guess if we want to open up here to the agendas again, number two, and anybody that's been here before, what we're going to read right now is the decisions that have been made and where we're at so far. If anybody else has anything to add or discuss and bring up how we got to those decisions or anything else, I'd ask you to add that. I don't want to be the only one speaking tonight. So, I'm going to go right off the decision page, which is on our website itself. If we remember back, we did have our first feasibility study together, basically one year from right now. And one year ago, Jerry Ayers came in in Plaineview and provided the feasibility study. Where that began with was July of that previous year, where Creighton and Plaineview had been talking for quite some time and really we weren't able to ever share anything. And so, it was decided at that point that we really needed an outside source to come in and provide a little bit of guidance of what things could possibly look like. And at that time, Osmond was added and then also Bloomfield and Wausau were added as well. And that's how we got today through the five schools. So Jerry started that project in July into August and then completed his feasibility study in January and presented that. And since then, we've been meeting as study committees. And tonight marks our eighth study committee and we've had two joint committee meetings, or I should say joint board meetings in between there as well. So, I guess going down the decision list, and like I said, please feel free to add anything as we get to it. Students are the number one priority. This discussion, or these discussions are centered around students and providing students with quality opportunities. And again, I don't think we've hesitated away from that or veered away from that. I think that's been first and foremost what all these discussions have been about. We said this really from the beginning, elementary schools will remain in their current communities and utilize existing facilities to do so. You know, we've never wavered from the K-6 idea that that would, or those would stay within their community. We spent, I think probably one and a half meetings alone on the purpose statement of why we were meeting. And that is, we as a cooperative group strive to create sustainable, quality, and comprehensive educational opportunities for all students in the five school area. Number four, option J, the feasibility study creates a sustainable, comprehensive, and dynamic education system that meets the needs of students. And I think with that one, it is a long-term solution. It is, as we looked at different options there, I think we felt like option J was the best solution because it's a long-term solution. And I think academically, without question, it provides more to kids than any other option out there. The districts would like to see Northeast Community College be a part of the discussions from the beginning and provide students with expanded opportunities. N E C C can provide something to every student, whether they enter the workforce, after school, or after school, attend a two-year school, or plan to attend a four-year institution. If you notice, we've had Northeast Community at every one of our meetings, the first seven study committees that we have. They are not here tonight, they were not asked to be here. I think one thing that has happened very unfairly to them is they've been put kind of to the fire in a lot of ways, whether that was through other sources, other discussions, however that happened, in a lot of ways Northeast Community College was put kind of in a bad scenario. They were kind of accused as leading this charge, they were accused of taking too much of a role in this. And I think the biggest thing about Northeast Community College is again, kind of like we said in the statement there, they offer something to every student. They want to be alongside us, just as they would with any of the schools that are within this area. But they, you know, there's a lot of really great people and I'll fully admit, I've really enjoyed working with them. And I think there's, with any institution, there's, we want them along, we want them to be a part of it. But they also don't deserve to be, I guess, backed into a corner with different statements that are made. Anybody else want to add anything with Northeast Community College? Yeah, I think a lot of times they talk that, you know, we're trying to develop this two-year school and that it was just for kids that were going to go to the two-year college. Now, that of course was not true at all. We really talked a lot about career education and being able to provide career opportunities for students. Again, it's sometimes better to learn what you don't want to do just as much as you want to, or learn what you do want to do. And anybody else want to add anything with Northeast Community College? They've really added a lot to this whole equation, this whole possibility.
Well, it kind of surprised me how they were willing to spread out away from their campus. I always just assumed that, you know, northeast everything was right there. But they have like probably 150 initiatives on the board at any one time of things they're looking at as far as going out to other communities, which I didn't realize they could do that.
The other thing is, we try and prepare our kids for, I think first and foremost, a post-secondary education. And the data shows that that leans more towards a two-year than it does a four. And with the infusion of northeast, they could possibly be job-ready with an associate degree before they got out of high school. And that's, that's big, in my opinion. So it gives them a lot of options. And they also are affiliated with the four-year colleges. I mean, transfer, there's reciprocity between Wayne State, U N O, and Northeast Community College. So, there's a misnomer out there, you know, that it's just all about northeast, it's not.
I think they made the statement one of the first meetings too, that we're not here to get your kids because we're going to get them something like.
And Shane and the principals did a lot of work, Patty, you guys did a lot of work with the curriculum already. I shouldn't say a lot of work, you got kind of into it to a degree. What are some of the things that they would be able to offer, what we haven't been able to offer before by utilizing them as well as pooled resources with staff?
I think through our meetings, I think the biggest discovery was that all of us, every district of five, has master level teachers that can teach dual credit classes. And with that, we were also looking at the possibilities of even expanding to AP courses, which none of us can offer right now. And to me, that's important for a lot of our kids to compete. As I judged Omaha World-Herald Academic Hall of State team last year, we didn't have a lot of kids from our area that I could look at that had AP. And competing with those kids in the big levels, it was, it was really hard. They had to have outstanding GPAs and outstanding ACT scores to even compete with the kids with AP. We got kids that take all four years of AP. And then, sitting there next to a resume of people from Omaha Lincoln, doing the same grading on the same scale, which made it difficult. So, now I just don't know if our kids are competing on a state level or national level without some of those options. So that's some of the things we could find.
While you're talking about the AP, you might want to explain what the actual is. So that, I mean, I'm guessing a lot of.
Advanced placement classes where kids are accepted at any college minus. There are a few Ivy League schools that you have to have perfect scores to even have them considered accepting them. They don't even accept AP, International Bactolores on, except everywhere. So, which we're not going to have, and the P H C and P S O's. So, we just don't have that in our education in this part of state. Very few high schools have that in the state of Nebraska. But the offerings that everyone can bring to the table were, you know, there were areas that we could cover the entire curriculum where someone, any student from any of the schools could go and take a college-level course in high school in any area, in any area. Because of everybody having someone to cover all of their curricular areas. So, that was something that we discovered and thought that that was a huge benefit to the kids. Because we can teach a few in my building, we can teach a few different ones, or some similar ones, and you teach different ones, your school has another one, you know, and so, and some of your schools offer things and some of the other schools don't offer.
And on that note, don't be narrow-minded Shane, but we've actually started, I mean, we're offering classes to Osmond because a result of this conversation. And I just had a conversation with Brad this morning and we're looking at possibly sharing a few more classes with them just to get the ball rolling because he offers some things that we don't for college credit and vice versa. So, we're going to start working on schedules to try to get that going because that's a huge benefit to kids. And they're taught by the teachers in our building. And that's one of the things that I like about the battle system. Like with the northeast, they're taught by actual high school teachers that the kids can see, they know they're there. Yesterday I went to, yesterday I went to a legis, I have part of the legislative committee for the education bills and this is one that's coming up, they are trying to use lottery money now to fund this exact program that we're talking about. And so I thought it was interesting, they have $10 million that they don't know how to spend. I'm not going to help them, it's real hard. But it's a whole program set up and it was the career academies. And they were mostly talking metro and southeast, but, you know, it's all the stuff that we're talking about here. So I thought that was rather interesting that that's going to probably be a bill that our legislators are going to be discussing.
And kind of the new game changer is, you mentioned having a master's degree. Well, in the past, and even at northeast currently, you have to have a master's degree in the content area that you're teaching. Wayne State is now, has a new program where if you have a master's degree, you can teach, it could be in curriculum and instruction, it could be in administration, it could be in whatever. They're going to make you eligible to teach your undergraduate content area. So we've got several teachers that would not be eligible to teach dual credit courses at Northeast Community College that all of a sudden are going to be eligible to teach courses at Wayne State.
I'd like to talk just a little bit going back to Northeast Community College and I think the impact they have in our discussions that, you know, as we kind of floundered around to start with, with getting the five schools, we were kind of looking for a baseline on where to go and we started trying to build things on a curriculum basis. And northeast really, between them and also the Department of Education and the career and technical education, have a lot of data and a lot of statistics that I think has really been valuable as people, you know, as we've had those discussions. You know, Northeast Community College knows what jobs are out there. And the same thing with the Department of Education, that they've got the resource, you know, would look for the resources to get us that data that, you know, if we were going to look at some type of a career academy or something, what would have an impact in this particular geographic area and those types of things. So I think their involvement has really been vital in the discussions so far.
I think that leads right, what we're talking about in terms of jobs leads right into number six, the next one.
Yep.
Which is job retention, so.
Anybody else have any more on Northeast Community College? I think they're a great player in this game. And with what we want to establish and what we're looking at establishing, and they're a great resource for us moving forward. And I think they're somebody that we definitely want to have back within our, in this room in further discussions. And I think we need to treat them very carefully and make sure that we have open arms towards them, our reaction to them. Number six, job retention is a priority and it is a priority that staffing changes will be done through natural attrition and professional advancement. That was again, another statement that was made at the very beginning that when you look at pooled resources, we just talked about, you know, staffing, staffing is a resource, finances are a resource, students are a resource. When we look at job retention, when you pool together the land valuation of these five districts, you're looking at 2.25 billion dollars, which allows us to do tremendous things. That's a tremendous financial resource at your fingertips to where, we just talked about a lot of dual credit options, a lot of career and technical options, career academies. Those are all things that you can start doing when you have those resources available. So, we don't want to be a school that just offers the cores or the basics. So we were really able to, as you look at Northeast Community College and the curriculum side, really expanding outward with what we could offer. And, you know, it was with those types of resources, I think it was rumored that we were going to be cutting staff and reducing staff greatly. We said that from the very beginning, the staffing reductions would come from natural attrition. I think if you look at any of our districts right now, you have quite a few teachers that are at retirement age. You know, Creighton alone, we have 10 teachers that could retire at the end of this year. By the end of 16, 17, that number goes up to 15 teachers. And so you look to do it with natural attrition as well as professional advancement. I would say, you know, in a lot of different ways, you'd be looking at expanding as opposed to reducing when it's all said and done. Anybody else want to add anything on that? Keep moving.
I think just an interesting comment in our meeting about changes in staff. I know Plaineview's had a large turnover in the last, let's say, four years. In one year, we lost 112 years of teaching experience. I think Dave, you mentioned the other day, you lost how many years, including Paris and everything?
236 years.
One year.
Okay, number seven, each of the five districts have acted to invest up to $10,000 for the continued study of the five school feasibility. This money will be used for costs incurred in the process. Most of that money has gone to legal fees. And regardless of what happens, whether it's two schools or five schools that decide to move along, a big portion of the document that was created by the law firm can be used as foreback. Regardless of how it gets condensed down or stays the same, that money has been well-spent. And, you know, and I think when you look at overall, you know, all of our districts range from a 3.5 all the way up to a $5 million budget. $10,000 on that is pretty minor when you're looking at the future of the district and trying to plan. And again, that's all what all of our districts are doing is trying to plan. Number eight, staff representatives and administration from each of the five schools, along with seven members from the N D and from Northeast Community College, met on June 17th and began outlining a possible curriculum. Curriculum work is an ongoing process and curriculum outline will be provided to the public in the future. That was an all-day meeting that we had at Northeast Community College where we brought in a lot of our staff to begin to take a look at the curriculum. I think in that first meeting, the main thing that was accomplished is we looked at each individual district and what we offered and didn't offer and started discussing what we could offer. But it was really a focus on the first meeting of what we were currently doing. And then, it's progressed from there with your guys' future meetings is what we could do with combined or pooled resources. And, you know, that's where you might find a person that has their masters in social science and a person that has masters in industrial tech or agriculture. And I think when we started counting possible dual credit options, I think we got up to over 40, which also includes quite a bit of specialization too. It wasn't just your, you know, your American history, your history, your biology, your math, your English. It was actually we were able to specialize as well. I thought that was very interesting.
Just curious, jump back a second, on legal, of the $10,000 these schools set aside, how much have we paid to the legal firm out of that $10,000?
Like about half of what we're at.
That's all you're doing?
Yeah.
We're at 24.79.
Okay. Somebody asking a hundred on the board game. I'm just curious, I didn't, you know.
Alright, let's see here. Number nine, five districts have established subcommittees in the following areas. Curriculum instruction, legal, architectural, investigative, and economic and labor. Each district provided one board member to each committee. The subcommittees will work on short-term timeframe, research, consult, investigate, and provide to the larger group, the boards of education and the public with additional information. That actually will lead into number three on the agenda item. I think we have a lot of, between the districts right now, we have a lot of open slots that we need to fill and restructure with too, so we'll get to that. Alright, number 10, following discussions by each individual board of ed, the general feeling of each of the board of ed was to open future study committee meetings to the public. And so that is of course what we've done right here. You know, I think when we first did that, we did notice a little bit of our discussion did maybe decline or reduce a little bit, but hopefully we can continue to overcome that and feel free again to have the open dialogue and discussion. Number 11, the five districts and study committees have discussed multiple topics, including a vote of the people, survey of the patrons, alternatives, school structure, joint meetings, curriculum, and transportation. These discussions will be discussed by respective boards of ed during future boards of ed meetings. And then these stated topics will be ongoing. You know, we've talked a lot or heard a lot about transportation. That's something that we really haven't gotten to as a group. We're going to talk about a survey here later. I think all of us have addressed within our own individual communities, the vote of the people, the school structure, that's another decision that we'll get to here in a little bit. The joint meetings and curriculum of course is going to be ongoing as well. Number 12, each of the five districts have been awarded a $5,000 revision grant for the 14, 15 school year. So far with revision, we have had all of our teachers meet at Osmond and that's where we began the revision process. Kind of similar to what we did at Northeast Community College. And again, it was a discussion of the curriculum and all of us then qualified for that $5,000 grant. And most of us probably right now are working on our community meetings. I know ours is next week. Anybody else have any information on where they're at with revision? And basically, once we've completed that, N D will come in again, they'll meet with our staff. I think that's in March, early March, and they'll meet with all of our staffs again combined. And then from there, all of us would be eligible for additional money beyond the $5,000.
When is it scheduled?
February 10.
February 10.
Did you send out invitations to basically all businesses, is that?
Quite a bit of businesses, yeah. I think we sent, oh, maybe 25. Alright, number 13, we've acted to retain the law firm of Perry Guthrie-Hasi and Desford. Rex Schulte is the individual that is representing us at this time as a collective group. Number 14, five districts have all acted to focus future discussions and efforts of five school study on the establishment of a 7-12 grade level system. I think that's, that's something that I think occupied quite a few of these meetings leading up to the October meeting, to where all the districts then did decide on a 7-12 facility in the future. Anybody want to, I guess, provide the reasons why we decided 7-12 as opposed to 9-12?
I guess I'll go.
Thank you.
We went around and did all of our discussing and talking about sharing staff, transportation of staff, utilizing the staff's resources, and I think between the different districts. The 7-12 concept seemed to be the most efficient and we could retain people in the same building and they could teach not only 9-12 classes, but also exploratory classes with the middle school kids as well as the junior high kids, 7-12, or 7-12. So, it just seemed more efficient to have those people be able to do, well, especially without having to pay them to drive and use a planning fee other days to drive to another building. So, that seemed the most efficient way.
And where would they be driving to?
Yeah. I mean, which community wants to have the middle schools? I mean, that's, even if you look at the feasibility study, there would be work have to be done to almost all the buildings to be able to do that, come in the elementary and the middle school part, so.
Yeah, multiple, you know, the big issue was, you have multiple middle schools. How do you decide which community, yeah, communities get more together and, yeah.
We're driving between the middle schools along. You know, if they're on opposite ends, people would have to drive to either end.
The transportation of, I could have one child at Osmond in elementary, somebody at Wausau in middle school and then in high school, I would have a consolidated big school, whatever that's at.
And then another factor that we looked at in making some of the decisions were schools that have gone with three or more communities together and what grade levels they had. And all the one were acceptable.
Today, when I was at the kind of appointment speech meeting, it actually was in Howell Dodge and so, they're already looking at revamping their plan from when I was there a few years ago because they're finding that their students are missing an entire period of the day with those teachers transporting back and forth. Because they have the middle school in Dodge and the high school in Howell. So I said those kids are missing an entire period because of all the transportation that is taking teachers to get back and forth because they're sending all of the specials that go over there. So by the end of the day, they're missing one entire period. And we put them in a study hall for 15 years, is what they told me.
I think also what to, we already have problems with junior high numbers. If every town has a middle school, you only have two or three towns with a middle school, you're not going to have numbers for football, for basketball, for anything else. I think when you look at transition from a K-6 building to a 7-12 building, where those kids go on to that 7-12, they're on one building the whole time, it makes transitions less smoother. And going from eighth grade and hopping into this freshman, I think that would show a lot of difference. And you only have one transition. Instead of going to a middle school somewhere else for two years and going to a high school somewhere else. And a 7-12 setup really established an opportunity for our electives to be provided in the seventh and eighth grade where if we're a 9-12 facility, I think those kids that are in the middle school at seventh, eighth grade would lose out on a lot of those electives. And especially if we talked a lot about career education and providing the admin services even lower. Very important that we have access to those people all at the same time.
And I'm glad you brought that topic up, well, the guidance. And I think that's something that we're missing in all of our schools is how important the career technical, I'm talking about how effective guidance is even down into the seventh grade, or the middle and eighth grade side, and getting kids to talk about what they are interested in so they can start to line the edge or what they want, what they want to be to grow up. And so they at least have an idea of what they might want to try. I mean, if that's what they're having, I would like to see some of those issues.
Just on the point of career guidance in those young grades like that, I guess that's one thing that I guess has come up in conversation with different people and most parents, particularly those who have kids in that age group, kind of smile when you talk about career guidance for a seventh grader. I, it's just that.
It's more exploration, guidance is probably the wrong word, it's exploration.
Maybe, yeah.
It's actually, actually starts.
Exposing to many, many, many things and that may come up in a whole lot.
Oh, you're actually supposed to start at kindergarten. No, seriously, the curriculum starts at kindergarten.
I've read the revision, what they have on the Nebraska Department, I went through the education, on the website for the Nebraska Department of Education, looking at what revisions plans are. Personally, I guess I think that's really a reach to start talking kids that young about. I just find my own kids, I guess, being a parent, that their idea of career direction is so chaotic and flirty. I don't know if there's, I don't think any value in it. And I'm not sure if, I guess personally, we should commit a lot of resources to the public and they're trying to guide seventh and eighth grade. I mean, guidance, like you said, maybe is the wrong word, maybe it's just exposure, but, I don't know.
Actually, we do have our kids go through with our guidance counselor and they do explore careers. And after what he's done with these kids, it's kind of amazing that they kind of start to explore several things. I mean, they get to do the exploratory, but I personally think that guidance is a good. I mean, they get to do the exploratory, but I personally think that guidance is a good idea, because I think they end up floating around out there, they have no idea, so let them take those classes, but this is what I need. I'll use my son for example, he was in that class, and he always thought he wanted to be a sniper. No idea. Just say it. So, I mean, you know, his two options, one of them was absolutely not gonna happen, um, but he's now decided that since he has a love of the outdoors, that that's probably where he's going to go, because our guidance counselor came in, they had to pick three areas, and then they had to go in and explore those in detail, and he's kinda narrowed it down already, as a freshman, that he wants to be, um, working for a game of parks in some, some state. And so I think the guidance part of it, they do need some help with that, because they think, once they're juniors, they're sophomores, it's, some of those classes aren't, it's too late for them, they can't get into the classes that they need to get that, to that point in college.
That's good, like, what grade is your son in?
He was a seventh grader, wasn't he, did he?
Right.
And he's a freshman now.
Statistically speaking, what are the odds that your son's gonna end up actually being in that field? Stats would say it's well less than fifty percent. I mean, of college graduates.
But he has three different areas that he, he kinda narrowed in on, as opposed to no direction at all, which helps as a freshman when they're signing up for classes, because I don't have a kid over here that says, I'm a senior, I'm a junior, now I think I wanna go into the medical field. It's a little late to go in the medical field when you're a junior and senior, because you haven't really taken the things that you need to prepare.
My brother was kind of, I think he's almost more typical of a lot of college graduates, he graduated about five years ago with a degree in psychology from the University of Lincoln, and now he works for a computer software company, doing financial software, tech support. And I thought, that's all too common among college graduates, is that they are, you know, a degree in psychology, and suddenly, I mean, if he'd been focusing on that for these years, it's a waste of time. Really, they said, you got a college degree, good enough, they sent him to college in Ohio for six weeks, they trained him, they put him to work. And I, and I don't know if that's becoming more and more common, and I think it is. So I, I guess that's where I kinda have that apprehension about saying that we're gonna truly benefit a kid from seventh or earlier on, the odds of them ending up in whatever they're looking into are extremely rare. I started out in mechanical engineering, ended up joining the Marine Corps, and I came back and farmed.
I think that's what we're trying to avoid in the situation though. We're trying to put kids in a position where they can go to a two-year school, or a four-year school, or come right out of work and do that, by giving them these options and putting them in forward, they can find out, okay, if I don't wanna do this now as a freshman, I still have two or three years to figure it out before I go to school. So I think it's just providing the options, what I wanna do, or what don't I wanna do, and those kinds of things. So I still think you have to provide those resources for the kids.
I guess I'm almost fearful of putting kids on a career path in terms of what classes they take. You know, you need, if they're showing an interest or proclivity for sciences, and they start taking the chemistry and the physics, if they end up, in their senior year, deciding to go somewhere else, they've actually invested resources, instead of being just general and broad. I guess if the secondary education should just be a general education to make you a well-rounded citizen, or should it be guided towards specializing in your career field? Typically in the world today, people coming out of high school really don't know what they wanna do, and are they more, would they be better served by just a general secondary education to make them a well-rounded citizen, rather than hardly becoming specialized and more than likely ending up specializing in the wrong field?
Well, we already require that by graduation requirements, to have that general. We're talking about the electives.
Right.
So they already have to take those core subjects.
Right.
But what electives can we offer them? What exposure can we give them to a lot of different fields? And as a small school, we don't have that necessarily, then, that same opportunity, uh, to, to provide those. Now, are they necessarily just because they're taking advanced, uh, math classes, gonna go into the math too? Not necessarily. But those are, they're gonna get those classes, but they're also gonna be exposed to, to electives, it's no different than going to college. I mean, if you need a hundred and twenty hours to graduate, how many come from the content, the core area, how many are electives?
We're not saying instead of core classes, we're saying in addition to. I don't think you can ever go wrong exposing kids to more things.
I think not giving them that type of exposure to create a better understanding means we're giving up on ever helping them understand what they wanna do when they go to college and when they're in after college. I mean, you don't do something, it's like giving up.
I agree. I think any education, regardless if you use it in your life, is never a waste. Education is education, it broadens your perspectives, it gives you a, a wider view of the world, of the situations that you're in in life, I never think it's a waste. I think it's more of a waste to not try this darn thing, and to try.
I guess I don't wanna imply that, I guess it's a waste to take a class that you, you take a chemistry class, that don't necessarily mean, but I, I did in high school, but I don't take any of the chemistry much when I farm, so I don't consider it a waste, I guess I really enjoyed the class, but, I guess if one of the driving reasons behind the plan for restructuring how our communities educate our kids is this expanded curriculum, I guess I hope it'd be worth it. You know, it, it is a substantial restructuring of how we're gonna educate and how our community's gonna operate, I guess I hope that is justified. You know, and that, if we're doing it, the reasons for doing it should have tangible rewards that really will be realized by the kids, not just because it'd be nice. You know, I mean, there are gonna be consequences to our communities of this past, which they go through, some negative, some will be positive, I mean, it's not, nothing's ever all or one or the other, but, I guess I just, we think we need to assess, I guess, what the value to the kids is gonna be. Is it nice, or is it really gonna benefit them and push them further in line?
And I think that's what the task of this committee, or the groups of, of us is getting at, is build that picture and then decide, is that what we want? But we have to build the picture yet, we're so far from getting that picture built, that we, we need to look at it, and then we know, yes or no, is it an idea? Because we haven't built it, or we haven't put it together.
You know, how often have we heard the scenario where a kid goes off to school, they think that they're gonna go into education, well, two years in, they're in business, and then a year later, they're medical, and they're, you know, they, they spent thousands and thousands of dollars of their money, their parents' money, um, and now they're nearing, well, what they thought was graduation, and now they're going back for another thirty-two hours, or whatever they need, and, you know, i- if we can avoid that at an earlier age to where we've exposed them to these things, and maybe they've started narrowing it down, maybe they won't jump four or five different majors, but I think a lot of our kids that go off to college, they're switching their majors multiple times, you know, and especially if they're four-year kids, um, they're switching to serverly number of times, and each time it's, you know, either costing themselves money, or most likely mom and dad money, and, that, that's kinda the idea of the whole career education, is where you expose them to, make that decision a little bit earlier, and hopefully not make that ultimate mistake like, and, and we've also always heard the stories of, if it goes off to school, switches its major three times, graduates, decides that he still doesn't know, or she doesn't know what they wanna do, decides that they're gonna go ahead and get their masters, just because they haven't decided what they wanna do in the real world yet, and now another two or three years later, they have their masters and they're still confused, and they're getting their doctorate, um, and just trying to prolong getting out of the real world, because they still don't figure it out. So, and one they really like.
There's the other side of that too, where they go get their four-year, and then decide what they want, they go, 'cause mom and dad say you gotta have a four-year degree, they get out of there with a degree in something they don't want, they go back to a technical school and get a two-year degree in what they wanna do, and then they do. So they got six years into a two-year degree, where maybe you can guide them, and you're not gonna save them all, I mean.
No.
Yeah, but you're gonna, you know, there's gonna be a few, a few more that you're gonna guide in the right direction, and you're gonna maybe save them two, three, four years of school.
I like Corey's examples, especially, um, you know, a kid taking a medical class, you know, thinks he wants to be a doctor, sees blood the first time, decides, whoop, that's not for me, you know, or the kid, you know, he himself wanted to be an accountant, is a young, is a freshman, he says, I took the first accounting class, I changed my mind, he says, I don't want to have any interest in account. Uh, and so, if nothing else, it exposes them to things they don't like as much as it exposes them to things that they do agree, uh, by giving them lots of options.
You know, each of us are different, we're at different stages. Uh, when I went to college, it was forty-five dollars for a class, and the entire bill for a year was about twenty-two hundred, and that didn't break me, um, but you look at it now, and, and it's devastating if they go and get a degree, a degree, and owe forty to sixty to a hundred thousand dollars, and don't work in the profession that they, they look for. Mike, I think that, that we would be sitting our head in the sand if we didn't guide these kids, and, and show them the opportunities out there. If you have them pick two or three choices that they might be interested in, and then kids today question more why they need to take this or that than ever did. I didn't question a thing when I was in high school, I took what I was told to, and, and that was just because that's what we did. Now they question everything. Why do we have to have this, why do we have to have that? Well, if you pick three or four degrees that they're interested in, and say, right, you need math in these, you need science in these, you don't need this and that, you know, it makes it more relevant, at least, uh, if you're researching. You know, we didn't pick this, uh, and, and go into this, you know, blind. There's a lot of research out there that shows that, uh, career exploration pays off, and I truly believe it does. So I don't think we're going wrong by steering kids into choices that they're interested in.
I think with the revision program, isn't it being implemented now in a couple schools? I think you mentioned Kearney, was it Grand Island?
Grand Island.
And maybe Omaha?
Well, South Sioux.
South Sioux?
South Sioux is also in Omaha Metro, has obviously been doing that for a while, and Lincoln now has.
Starting it, I believe?
Yeah, South Sioux, southeast.
And I don't know how many.
Driven by industry.
Yeah, I don't know how many years they've been doing it, but, and maybe, Corey, I can follow up and say, well, we've done it for, you know, maybe it's only been three or four, it's fairly new, I understand it to be, and you don't, you know, obviously being fairly new, you don't have a lot of data to follow with it, but it'd be interesting if they did have that of, what kind of career placement have they seen out of kids that have been through the program, you know, has it shown to be beneficial, how did they compare to other schools? And maybe he has it, maybe he doesn't, it's maybe unfair to him, but.
I think we've touched on that already, and it's been a real long.
I would be surprised if it did, I mean, it seems to be something that he's interested in, I mean, I gather that's kind of his program. So, i- i- I mean, I, I think it'd be valuable information to see is, when it's been done, how has it impacted kids, either maybe earning potential or job placement?
And the rest is, the rest is behind the curve, when it's very dependent on, uh, high school arena, it's been around four years, and outlines it, and it's, it's been around a long time now.
And a lot of, of businesses, if you have a career degree, and can make as much money as someone for the four-year, a lot of businesses will send you back, uh, for further education specific to that. And a lot of students, it's a gamble, taking a four-year degree and, and then trying to get a job in it, so it's, it's not all, all guaranteed, you get, you might as well have a, a less debt, and be able to pay that off.
Especially when we're looking at smaller communities, especially in Northeast Nebraska, you know, the, the careers that are out there and that are available to our kids that are graduating from here are two-year degrees, and those are jobs that they can stay within the region as opposed to, you know, a lot of our four-year degrees are gonna send them to Omaha, Lincoln, or, or beyond that even, and, especially when we're, we're looking at trying to, you know, add population or stabilize, um, those are the careers that we're really gonna be looking at, is, is that what these kids can stay around the area as opposed to moving on. Alright, and the last one, fifteen years, the five districts have all acted, uh, that when making decisions on the five-school process, approval of the five boards of education collectively must be unanimous, and, you know, the, the, this one, I, I think had quite a bit of discussion. Uh, the main thing is, is I think as we've looked at this, uh, we've been primarily on the same page, we've been able to work together very well, and, uh, you know, we know that there's gonna be disagreements that come up and arise, but, uh, you know, we, we discuss the fact that when those diff, or disagreements come up, that we really need to educate, or take a step back and, and readdress the issue, whatever it was, and, and, and all of those districts would be unanimous towards that. Any other thing you have on that one? Alright, uh, number three, restructuring of the subcommittees. Uh, I, I think this is something that we probably need to do back within our individual boards, and that is to restructure those once we get back to our regular board of ed meetings in February. Does any district actually feel those much, you guys know?
I would be, be happy, because I kinda put the list together before, as superintendents, if you get your committee members, if you would just email them to me, and I'll make a change, and get a copy of all of them back out to everybody.
Okay.
And I suppose we have to, if you have your own meeting format, we'll make sure to do that, if you wanna do that, you can send it to me.
Okay. Alright, number four, uh, the feasibility study itself, um, you know, I, I think it's important that when we, we take a look at the feasibility study, and, and I'll tell you, mine has collected a lot of dust, uh, because I don't expect it to end up shelf in six to eight months, and, uh, when we look at the feasibility study, that was, for one, if, if we're ever gonna be eligible for any funds from the state, we had to have a feasibility study conducted, and I think it's important to remember that when we're, we're discussing the feasibility study, is that that was just a starting place for all of us to, to begin, and, uh, by no means was that feasibility study ever meant to say, this is exactly what we're doing, this is where the school's gonna be, um, this is the decisions that have been made, you know, that was an outside firm, an outside source that came in and drew that up and created then the feasibility study. Uh, beyond that, uh, i- it's a, it's a conversation piece, and, and that's where it really stops, and i- it helps us to have the discussions, but, uh, by no means was it the, the blueprint or the map of where we're going, or how we're gonna do things. And, um, been a lot of speculation based on that feasibility study, that, you know, X amount of teachers are gonna lose their jobs, or the school is exactly right here, and that's gonna benefit another district. Um, you know, I, I think it's really important that, well, again, we understand that it's, it's just a starting place, it's not the blueprint of how things are gonna go. Anybody else wanna have one? Who's able to say?
Just, I've been at, I think, every meeting. The only time we even discussed it was the first two. I mean, we're past it, it, it just, the information's not, I mean, the numbers they have, we know what our numbers are, keyed up, and I just would add that, that it's no longer relevant, we had to do it, but we're working on something else.
Right. You know, in our district, we had one in, in two thousand and nine, and it wasn't necessarily uh, to this magnitude, but it, it took a look at our current curriculum and our facilities, um, and it was done by Jerry Oles as well, but in two thousand and nine, he put together enrollment numbers, uh, and projected out, of course, at that point, to ten years. Uh, really where ours came at was, of course, his enrollment numbers were incorrect, were much less than what he projected out in two thousand and nine. And I think probably all the, even, other districts might vary on that, uh, but I know ours was incorrect on the, the low side.
The largest discrepancy is in the birth to four, or birth to five, because of projections, and we knew that, uh, and a lot of people dwelled on that, saying that's wrong, so everything else is wrong, but a lot of the data we sent as far as our classes and our instructors and our assessed value, that's right out of the reports we sent to the state.
Project that assessed valuations are going up twenty-five percent, or twenty-eight percent, or some places is fifty percent. Or did you have an area that was like a hundred or one percent?
Yeah, we had a small stretch of land, yeah, that doubled. That was in Pierce County, it was a small, small stretch, but. Uh, number five, labels and assumptions, just a couple of things, I think, to address on that, is, you know, first of all, right out of the gate, this thing was labeled as the mega merger, um, a- and I think that did, overall, that did a lot of damage to the development of this, because instantly when you heard mega, uh, you thought that this was gonna be a school of five hundred kids in a class, and, um, we were gonna be competing against Omaha Central and Omaha South, and, um, it was gonna be this, this huge Class A school. Um, you know, i- if mega is eighty to a hundred kids a class, um, I, I guess it, it's fitting to it, but i- it's eighty to a hundred kids is, is what Creighton had in the nineteen eighties, it's what Plameview had in the nineteen eighties, um, I believe Bloomfield was.
Bloomfield is close.
Was close to that.
We were high speeds, uh, through the seventies.
Right. And so mega is by no means what we're doing, it's five districts trying to work together, which has happened in the, the state of Nebraska, I mean, there are five schools that have gone together, there's been other schools with, the, the number of these, we're looking to coming together as well. Um, so, um, I, I think again, it's, it's really unfortunate that, that label was, uh, put on this from the very beginning. Uh, the other side of it is, you led into, we've taught, we focused a lot on Class B, um, and, and that it has the potential to be a Class B school. Um, first of all, you know, all of the superintendents across the state of Nebraska, uh, had been surveyed from the NSA in terms of basically classification system, and seventy percent of the superintendents responded back that we needed to look at reclassify, reclassifying, and, and it wasn't meaning towards adding classes, but it was really taking a look at primarily what'll be, end up being Class B. Um, so it's really hard to call this a Class B school, uh, when we don't even know what Class B is gonna look like, possibly in two years, or three years, or four years, uh, as they take a look at reclassifying. And if anybody has watched Class B, the problem is you have the biggest schools are close to nine hundred to a thousand schools, or a thousand kids. So roughly three hundred kids a class, all the way down to, you know, the eighty, ninety kids a class. And so Class B has had a huge disparity. And so that's why I think that'll be addressed. I think if anything, you're going to see Class A maybe get a little bit smaller, and then Class B will get smaller.
Class A?
Yeah.
They want to increase that?
Yeah, or increase that, but I think.
Partly because they're saying that they want all of the Lincoln and all of the Omaha schools to remain Class A. And right now, you've got places like Omaha Benson that, that be, yeah, should be Class B. Yeah, so they're wanting to keep all those, those schools in that same district, in the same classification. Well, in order to do that, you're going to have to expand Class A because you've got places like South Sioux City that are quickly, I mean, they're Class A now. They're inching up every year, up the, the chain, so. And then you get places like Columbus that have traditionally been A that actually should be B, but they petitioned to be moved up the class, so.
So we have no idea what Class B will affect in the future, so I don't, I don't think we should get held up on that.
Just curious, who doesn't have the determination on class size, is that from the NSA?
Yeah, that's in NSA, yeah.
For the study.
Yeah, and what it is, is your nine through eleven grade enrollment as of the last Friday of September. And that's what classifies. Now, football is two years, every other sport is for the next year.
And that Class B rating, we were kind of looking at that as, that's where we would be today if we were all together. But we, I don't know, that we were looking at, okay, it's three years down the road and we do this, and our numbers are dropping. Would we still be a Class A, B school today? Our enrollment today is three forty-one. Class B C one cutoff is about two twenty-eight. So.
So it's a hundred twenty people.
We, we'd have to drop quite a ways. And we probably will eventually, but it would probably take some time.
And to answer your question, Mike, it's actually all the member districts usually get, get a vote, get a vote at our local district meetings. And there's six districts across the state. And then based on their size, like District Two is kind of a metro area, they get more votes at the state level, more representatives that go there. But that's actually who determines it. It's not necessarily just the Board of Directors, that's a, this is the way it's going to be.
All right, number six. Dave, you're up.
Okay, just almost has it passed this around, I'm going to start this, I'll have my phone. Following the Wausau Joint Board meeting, where Rex got up and talked. Between that time and prior to our December before the meeting, I believe, we, we had quite a few conversations with people from the community that were approaching our, several of the board members. And visiting with lots of the concerns they had. And one of the, I'll back up for Sam, one of the reasons we're bringing this up is because when we got together on this, we were going to be a transparent group and tell each other what was going on. And we wanted to bring this in front of the group prior to doing anything. But we, they had a lot of concerns, and some of it was probably just our fault. We didn't maybe summarize or come across quite as well on that meeting in Wausau and some of the effects or, of, of the logistics of how this thing would come together. I think everybody here pretty well understood, you know, what Rex is, the, the, the board would submit a merger plan to the state. And then you have a bond vote, and that would be basically the referendum whether, yes, you're going to pass this, or no, you're not going to pass this. Or one school district, if they didn't vote for it, this thing would fail. Followed completion of the study. Anyhow, we had a lot of concerns. We visited with quite a few of them for a while, and several business people in town and stuff kept on the, on the deal. So we finally talked amongst ourselves a little bit. We did contact Rex on this. What they wanted was, they wanted to reassure us that, basically that we as a board just weren't going to vote this merger in and not, without tying it to a bond issue, which logistically is not impossible, you can't, we have no funds to build a building, you know. But they wanted that reassurance. So we contacted Rex. I think Mr. Ham did that, and, and he was very supportive of the idea, actually, because there's some benefits to this thing. One of the things is, is you get the study completed, whatever date that might be, you present that information to the public. And then you will go ahead and create an official vote. That then determines if you have one district that falls out, that says, I don't care, we've seen the data, we don't want it. Or, you know, maybe two of them, or whatever it is. Then you don't propose a five school merger plan to go into the state and then go ahead with the bond thing based off that. Maybe you're down to four schools at that time, or three, or whatever it might be. So that would give you an early indication before spending a lot of extra time and effort about submitting that merger plan and that. So anyhow, we are going to bring this to our February board meeting. They wanted it in January, but we said we were going to bring it to the group first because of the transparency reason. And I guess you're all seeing a copy of the, the resolution. And basically, you know, upon completion of the study and those findings we presented to the public, and then we will hold an official vote in the community, in the district. And then the board will proceed based on those, based on those results. And the reason we put an effective date on there is because there'll be, if this thing is not done by January the seventeenth, obviously there'll be some new board members in place. So this board does not want to bind the new board, but they could have the option of re-adopting that resolution at that point or not. But that's why that, that date is on there. Did I miss anything yet?
Well, basically what Rex said was, he almost brought it up at the Wausau Board, or, at the Wausau meeting, and said, as a suggestion, but having not mentioned anything to the boards prior, he didn't want to, basically tie the board's hands by stating something publicly. But basically, his suggestion was that all five districts conduct this vote. And largely because of what Ed said, the benefit is, if there are some, some communities that are just adamantly opposed to this, why go through the reorganization portion and then go through the whole bond election just to have it all kicked back? We would know upfront that if it were Osmond, Osmond's out, so now the other four, prior to wasting all that time and energy and money for the, for the bond election, can, can figure out what you want to do. So he said there's a lot of advantages for, in terms of the resolution. I, I think at the, at the meeting the other day, Mike had asked the question, well, what happens if somebody doesn't approve this? This is designed primarily for Osmond. You know, Rex said, you know, whether you pass the resolution or not is irrelevant, but he strongly suggests that you have the actual vote. And he suggests that it's conducted, he said, most districts, or a lot of districts go through this process anyway. And he suggests that the vote be conducted by a third party. So that there's, you know, no question about it. And he said a lot of times, a local CPA firm or somebody like that actually handles the, the process. But it's not a county election.
Do you want to explain kind of why it's not a county election?
Because you're, yeah, you're not voting on, I mean, like for, a vote for reorganization, that does not go through that process.
Would this be a, a walk-in poll vote, or would it be a mail-out to everybody?
That would be completely decided by, well, the committee here, if, if it's all in agreement that we, that we ever get to that point. I mean, you're, the biggest thing that you're going to have with this is, what is the question? And, and that's all, it's contingent. And he suggested that there only be one question, not to be confusing and have multiple questions on the ballot. It was just one question. And then the next thing is, who gets to vote? Is it just registered voters? Is it all residents above the age of fourteen? Is it, I mean, there's a lot of factors that you could, you know, because good students have a say in this. And again, this, these are all, these are things that he was throwing out. And then, yeah, what type of vote would it be? Would it be walk-in, would it do the identification, and you mark them off? Would it be mailed, mailed out? You know, some districts have done that in the past. But those are all things that, once we decide that that's, that we get to that point, here's, here's how we're actually going to conduct the vote.
So if all five of us would agree to, to pass this, does that mean that we're all in it until we know all the facts and it gets to that vote?
No.
No.
No. All we're saying, and, and, and understand, what Rex told me was, if this will make the constituents of Osmond happy to know that they're going to have a say prior to the board voting to have a sense of the reorganization, then by all means. This is just letting people know upfront that at least Osmond's position, and, you know, we had it on the agenda to discuss in January. But we told the papers that were there that because, you know, we said that we were always going to be transparent, and we don't want, you know, something to come as a surprise. We want to make sure we bring it to this committee first and to let you know the rationale as to why we're doing it.
So who might the third party be that would conduct this?
Right, I don't know, you could, Jay Nicole, I mean, whoever, yeah, your CPA are from around the area.
Well, that's kind of what we're hearing from, from our community, it seems like, is that they want to have a voice in what direction we go. And, and I agree that before you get so far along that you're, you're, you've spent a lot of money or, or made some decisions you're not prepared for, let the people come forward, you know, and we, you know, after giving them more information so that they can, you know, make a, a informed decision.
But when is that vote going to take place? I mean, we're talking about all these committees and doing, like, we're in architecture. Are we going to continue to get the whole building design and the land tied up and all that before this goes to a vote? Or is it going to happen before that all happens?
I don't think we can afford to go that far until we know.
But then you don't know the facts, you know.
Right.
Are you going to tell them where the school's going to be, or what the curriculum's going to be, or what the master outs are going to be? If you don't do all that stuff first, it's a catch twenty-two.
I just look at it as a, as more of a process that we're going to go through. Every step of the process, you get smarter with it. And, you know, you may get three steps down the road and, and decide, well, it's not for us, you guys keep going. So I don't think there's any, I don't think you have to get to the end to say no, but I just think you get smarter as you get further into the process.
I guess for me, and I think I speak for our board, we don't want to drag this on forever. We want to know, is this going or not? I think everybody wants to know.
And that's been the first comment that we've had at all of our meetings, they've all wanted to know, you know, a vote.
You, you may change some minds of the people that will actually listen. You're not going to change too many minds, though. No matter what you present to them. I mean, we have a general concept, we have a certain area where we know the building will be, we know it'll be state of the art, we'll have plenty of money because of our evaluation. I don't think you're going to change too many minds.
Put an abbreviated survey, help give some guidance, is this the community center?
That's one of the next agenda items.
Obviously, that's what my mind goes, with the information from that survey, helps guide a lot of whether or not your community's really in or out, or they split, because it's seventy, thirty.
The next thing is, what if you're fifty-one, forty-nine on this vote?
Well, that's.
That can flip either way. Even if you're fifty-five percent in favor, it can still go the other way when it actually comes to a bond. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
We discussed that on the way over. Let's say you did have three that passed at seventy, thirty, and you had two that were fifty-two, forty-eight. Before you ever have that vote, you find out in those particular districts, or what more information do you need? Because that is a potential, you know, you can, you know, and I said this the other day, I had a board member that used to always vote in favor of the budget, but against the tax asking. And, you know, so you could, we could say, yeah, we're in favor of merger, but we're not going to spend the money to build, build. So that, I mean, so that is a possibility. I would think at that point in time, you have to go into those communities and, and, and find out, all right, what are those forty-eight percent? What are their holdups? And then maybe try to address those in a better way.
I'd be all for trying to understand what concerns are and things like that, rather than are they for or against? Until we can give them some information to help them understand what that decision is all about. So I think there's still a lot of people that are on the fence because we haven't given them any information to make that decision.
And we've done a poor job of that. It's on us.
Well, I know, and we haven't really gone through the steps to be able to give them that yet. We, we spent a lot of time.
Well, I think we're all afraid to say anything.
Yeah.
Well, I think we've studied the, the easy things, the curriculum and those things that make sense and it's easy to see, but we haven't gotten into the tough things.
I mean, I can even tell you from my decision process is, I want to lay it all out and look at the give and take. Because there's going to be give and take. There's going to be benefits that are strong benefits to doing this. There's going to be some things that you give up to make that decision. I can't make it until I have all those in front of me. And I think there's a lot of people in our communities that are that way. You know, you stand on the sidelines and you hear, you hear all the hubbub that's going on. And so then you start believing that, you know, and, but then you start getting educated about, well, what are the facts? And how are we looking at it? What are the benefits, potentials? And until we can describe that to our, our communities, I think we're wasting our time or making a mistake by asking them to give us their, their feeling, you know. I'd like to hear their concerns. I'd like to, and have that help steer us.
And, and I think it was good to see that Rex was kind of supportive of this idea. But initially, this was proposed as, be all in the waters down in, in a group that basically has consulted with the board on this or talked to the board on this. Continue with the study, we just want to reassure them that we're going to get a voice. Good, have your, have, we'll reassure you're going to get a voice in this thing. And then they said, we'll block your study. So I think then we need, I don't see this as something to block, I just see this as just a, a kind of a formality, let's get through it. Let's go back to our study.
Set, 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 take a timeframe on a vote, and ready that, we just keep going, and when it, when the time's right, that's a lot of it.
I mean, if we go beyond that date, then we just have to approve it again.
Question I'd have, are we going to do this uniformly, or is each district per itself to try and inform the, because that a lot of different information is going to get out there. Do the other districts want to have the resolution, or can you do without?
I think our subcommittees, they need to start working a little bit more so we can get the, you know, information. Because it doesn't seem like our subcommittees get together very often. And we need to maybe meet once or twice a month, get that, investigate, get some information so we can give it to the, you know, to the community. And come back here and, and be able to do a good uniform type of report at community meetings.
You know, when I talked with Rex, when we first started to set up the first meeting, that was a prayer. He said, well, how do you think it's going to go? And I said, I said, it's going to slow down tremendously when it comes to some decision-making that involves public. And I said, and, and we saw that in our elections. So to me, that sent a clear signal that, that either we're not doing something right, or we're, we're not getting that information out. And that was what Wausau people said the most, is we feel like we're being left out, and we want to be informed. It's hard to get the information out as fast as they want it. And, and then the elections came along, you know, and then that made a big change.
And we mentioned that factor our, our constituents too. And we said, you know, first of all, our number one priority is to take care of our school that's going on right now. We have to make sure things are running smoothly there. This is a secondary job that we're trying to do, and we apologize for being slow at it, but we're not getting things put together quite as quickly as we like. But give us some time, we'll put it together, and we'll present it to you, be good, bad, or indifferent. Like Aaron said, there's going to be positives, there's going to be negatives. If we can paint the picture, then you can decide.
That's, I think, the big perception is that there's, we're not communicating very well because we, we have so much more information we could communicate, and that's not true. I mean, we spent a lot of time the last, how old, you said, eighth, this is our eighth meeting. We spent a lot of time getting to know each other, building some trust, trying to understand what we're doing here. Figuring out what our challenges are together that we share. That took time. You know, I, I think people think we've been making a year, come on, you have this thing cooked up, don't you? You know, and it's so far from the truth.
The other thing is, if people don't know the truth, they'll make it up. And there's a lot of that going on. We are very, we've been transparent. Everything we've talked about is on that website. The made up stuff is just not true. And we've got to get that out to people and make a little bit.
Every time you have a meeting, you gotta maybe somehow get it out there because that's what the public wants. That's, like you said, there's so much hearsay over everything. And I've talked to a lot of people through all of these communities, and that's their number one thing. They just want to know what's going on. So as boards, we need to do our best to get it out there, whether it be, you know, just going out and talking to your friend, or putting it in the paper, or setting up a meeting for the public. Hey, this is what we talked about. We talked about just getting to know each other, what the, what every school had for the positives and negatives, and just tell them so that they don't make all these assumptions.
If we're going to keep moving forward at some point fairly soon, we've got to have an open meeting with Q and A. People have questions they want to ask us. I know that is, we probably don't want to do that, it's going to have to happen.
In hindsight, my opinion is that we kind of made a mistake by not having these meetings open to begin with. Because the conception got out there that we were hiding. Because the conception got out there that we were hiding stuff. And we weren't, that wasn't the purpose of not having it open. And I can see where that mindset came from, but in a sense, it's nice to have an audience, a group. And you would hope that you would at each community that you have it in. Either that, or they're not as interested as they said they were.
The part, I was, I'm gonna disagree with a little bit there, but I think those first few meetings were critical for trust development among this committee group. Because we didn't know each other at all. And so I think that those first meetings, although we put all the minutes out there, meeting minutes and everything were out there. But I think it was really critical that we developed some trust first.
If I had to go over again, I'd have kinda opened to start with, though. I think it would've made a little difference.
You know, I, I think when we look back to that very first meeting, everybody involved in that room was as nervous as they possibly would be. You know, and nobody knew how that was gonna go, we were wondering if there was gonna be yelling matches, shouting matches. I mean, I, I think all kinds of things went through your mind. By the end of that night, I think it was, what, an hour and forty-five minutes, almost two hours that we went, I think everybody felt really comfortable with how that meeting went. And, you know, it, it's, it's hard to break that ice, and I think by the end of the night, we, we had a lot of great discussion, and that led into the next one as well. And so I do think we needed to develop trust amongst each other, and it's, it's amazing that you can have five different philosophies from five different districts. But when it comes down, when it comes down to it, all of our five districts want to test our kids, and that was first and foremost.
You know, a lot of times these discussions go one of comedics and they fizzle out. We've been a year, and I think a lot of the public say, they're gonna pay attention to this because it's nothing serious.
Well, I think it's great, just because now when I go to your building for a game, your building survey, I see people I know. And you're not the enemy.
Well, I know you're the best, that's the enemy. I, I know where you stand and what, what topics that are, that really gets you riled up and what don't, and I know that where the ballgame, I can stand next to you and people are going, what's Bluefield doing with the pocket plane, you know? I sit down next to this girl at the ballgame, you know, it's, it's nice to just walk up to somebody and know who they are, and talk to them at the ballgame, and be able to just go to the gym. And walk up and date, and say, hey, what's going on? You know, but simple things, too. I mean, Creighton and Platteville share insurance time, you know, that saves each district fifteen hundred dollars. You know, if we share, you know, Karen Hazy coming in, you know, it's gonna save each one of our districts maybe a grand. It has opened the door for a lot of different things. You know, regardless of what comes out of this, the five districts are talking, and that's very positive.
You know, folks, we all are able to survive and are doing well right now. But you look at the legislative bills that are out there right now, and I think it was close to one in four deal with education, either directly or indirectly. And that's what's gonna cause a lot of problems if some of them come to fruition. It'll be the financial part, though, that squeezes, you know, to the point where you gotta do something.
You know, I've always looked at this as, you talk about the labels, and how they just kinda ran away with this thing. And I've never, I've always looked at it as a, we are a part of a study with four other schools. It's not a consolidation, it's not a mega merger, and it's nothing other than a, a study that we're involved in with four other schools. And I can't tell anybody what the outcome's gonna be, that it's gonna be a five-school consolidation, that it's gonna be a two-school consolidation, or that it's gonna be any consolidation at all. The point is that we're talking, and, because we can't see the future, we can't, we don't, we understand the uncertainty of finances. We understand the uncertainty of student numbers. So the point is to be a part of the conversation and continue to talk, and it may be a five-school consolidation if we see that that's the right thing to do. It may not, I don't know. I just see value in being at the table.
I was gonna, kinda, first of all, I respect the Osmonds going ahead, you know, the proposal, and, and, I guess, the thing, because I know, I know where the architecture committee is. We haven't really done a whole lot going on, but I pose a question, Dave, I guess, to you, because I know you're on the investigative committee. You know, the next item on here was to discuss the survey, and I think that brought up a comment I wanna make about that is, I'm guessing maybe you kinda like the architecture committee, you kinda bogged down with that a little bit, but, I mean, or do you have some ideas for a survey? And the thing I would say with that, I heard a comment over here. If the direction hasn't been that way, maybe that survey needs to be not so much our, would you be in favor of, say, a merger, but more about what information do people want? Maybe that survey needs to go that direction and say, what would you like to know about the finances? What would you like to know about transportation? What would, you know, maybe something like that. I'm just tossing that out, maybe as a discussion thing at this point, that, that might be where we need to go to get some information. You know, help at the community meetings and those things that we have.
Yeah, that's what we've discussed. And I know we met, well, we've asked N A S B and some other resources, but there aren't any real good surveys out there. So it'd be a matter of us coming up with the questions, and that's what we've discussed. It'd be informational purposes, it's not yes or no, because we don't see any real benefit to that. If, if our job as the investigative subcommittee is to provide information to the group as a whole. So that's why we were, and we haven't met. We met at N A S B, at the State School Board Convention. We had some other school districts that were there, several of you were there as well. And, you know, we went through and we kinda interviewed them, asked them questions about their process, and that list of questions that we said that we were gonna go through. Unfortunately, the one school district that indicated they were gonna be there that was probably of most interest to us, which built a school out in the middle of, between the three school districts, they didn't show up. It must've been hospital, obviously, or something else that they got drugged into before they got down there. But, yeah, that's, Rex, that's exactly what we're hoping to do. But I think the subcommittees, you know, as you indicated, those, that's all we gotta do. And Mike, you had made the question about, do we have to have architectural plans and all that? I don't know that we can do, we have to. I think you can have a rendering, and you can say that we're looking at a two-mile stretch or a three-mile stretch from here to here in terms of trying to acquire land or property or something like that. I think if people know those things, that's enough. I don't think we have to have, say, we're gonna buy this parcel of ground and it's gonna do that. Because we can estimate, architects or whoever can estimate what the cost of a facility like that is. And so you don't say it's gonna cost thirty-four point nine million to build. You say it could be anywhere from thirty-three to thirty-nine or forty million. Here are the, what the impacts on the current levy or assessed valuations, what it would look like. But I don't think we have to be definitive in order to have that vote. No, I'm talking about his prior question about having the vote.
Oh, okay.
I don't think you have to be definitive at that. I think you can be.
I think there are a few, like the bus routing and the times, I think that's a big stickler with a lot of people. I think that would be a good thing to know, okay, your kids are probably gonna be getting on the bus, first pickup's gonna be, you know, within ten minutes of this time. Get home within, you know, not exact, but pretty close.
And that's why I'm glad that I'm on the investigative.
But I think some of those things are really important to people. And they wanna know before they vote, what time is my kid gonna get on the bus? What time's he gonna get off? You know, not within a half hour, they wanna know within probably ten minutes.
Does transportation fall under, we don't have a chance to.
We're gonna form that one right now, and he's being.
I'm already going.
You're on two now.
So a survey is kinda something we're looking at then, maybe?
Yes. I mean, that would be one of the priorities when our subcommittee gets together.
Would it be helpful for, maybe one here to maybe submit a question to, I think would be?
That'd be awesome.
And then Ted can give you something to look at?
Yes.
Are we gonna do this as a group, or each school individually?
I think it needs to be as a group.
I don't think you do anything individual around.
I guess, are the results gonna come back as a group? Or is each school district gonna separate, you mean?
Yeah, they can come back individually within each community, but I just always have a question.
Yeah, surveys the same way. But each school needs their own results.
Right.
But, yeah. But I know we don't wanna yes or no right now, but I'd like to see some direction. If one town is seventy percent against, they're wasting their time here. And I guess you're not gonna change twenty percent of people's minds right now.
It depends on how much information you get out before you do your survey. I know that'll make some difference. If you did it right now, yeah, I agree.
Well, and this kinda leads us into number eight, too, which is our community meetings. Our school district has had three community meetings now, and the, the first one did not have a, a lot of people in attendance, you know, I think there's thirty-five people that weren't in attendance, and we're at three. The other districts, I think, like you, you're gonna have your second.
On the ninth.
On the ninth, and I think we need to really take a big look at community meetings and having more of those. And I will tell you, I think the people are misinformed on what is going on, and it is amazing how many people walk away from our community meetings saying, that's not what I heard downtown, that's not what I thought our numbers were, that's not anything that we've been told whatsoever. And that's how we gotta get the information out. We've left about an hour of diet, I think the first meeting we, or the second meeting we had, that was in December, we had about an hour and a half of discussion after the meeting. So we talked about, we had an hour and a half of communication then afterwards. The last meeting, we had about an hour afterwards, and that meeting was about two hours long total. But I, I will say that the communities are very misinformed, and we need to continue to provide that information. And as a group, we haven't done much. I mean, you know, we talked about this is our eighth meeting, we've been going for one year, we've made fifteen decisions as boards, and those aren't really decisions, it's just, some of them were decisions, some of them aren't, some of them were board action, but that's all we've done throughout a year. We focus in terms of the community meetings on our district itself, and trying to project out of what our, our district's gonna look like in the future. You know, I, I think it is, we are really fooling ourselves as a district if we think we're gonna be able to have the same stuff today, or five years from now, that we do today. Because it's not gonna happen. I mean, when you drop another hundred kids over an eight-year stretch, we can't have the same things that our kids have today, eight years from now, not gonna happen. So I, I think it's, it's very important that we present that information to our public so they know that.
Has anybody got any information back of other solutions? You know, everybody's against this, don't want this, does anybody ever come up and said, this would really work, this would be a better deal? I haven't heard anything like that. You know?
Honestly, that's one of the main reasons I ran the school board. Because I felt like, I can't just criticize. If you wanna do something, you actually have to present something, and that kinda follows on, conversation, I have a dead, uh, Baron quickly here. Is, are the five communities open to other presentations? Or is it five school or bus? I mean, I, I guess I just kinda would like to know. Are you guys willing to listen to anything else? Or not? I mean, it's not.
Such as?
Well, I don't know, I guess it depends how much I'm taking up with this meeting, but, you know, I guess just utilizing technology to teach kids at a distance, which I know comes with a negative connotation immediately, but, I guess I'd like, it'd be nice to be at an opportunity to really lay out what you have in mind. At a time, and maybe start with a local, maybe just with Wausau. I mean, I guess, I thought, if I couldn't convince support from Wausau, then I guess it probably a bad idea. You know, maybe use that as a filter. Just a question is, in general, you have new school board members who got active for some reason. Well, give them a chance, I guess. To at least put down something coherent, and maybe they can even, you know, maybe just type it up and make a somewhat of a brief presentation, to at least present ideas.
You know, I think that actually needs to help the boards, be able to take that discussion back to our communities. Because I remember in the first three meetings or so, we talked about alternatives, and I think the decision without the room is that we just didn't feel, feel any of those alternatives were long-term. I think it's okay to bring up some of those conversations again and, and discuss the good and the bad. If they aren't long-term, why? I think that's okay. You know, we've talked a little bit about what we've been through, and we may need to take a step back here, and making sure we're seeing anything that we can do to make the right decisions. It's okay to take a meeting and discuss some alternatives, I don't think that's a bad deal.
I agree, that's, that's good. Those of us that have been to all meetings, we've done a lot of that. But if the new members need to get there to the point we're at, that's perfectly fine.
It might just be that, I mean, it may be a redundant conversation, it's probably something you've never.
And I think maybe on six or seven new members, and that's probably what we need to do.
Brad, I think that's the point, I think you're right on.
You're talking about doing it at the local level first, and I guess I would applaud, or commend Creighton on what they're doing now, because they're focusing on just Creighton. And what are the issues that we face, and how, what are the different ways that we can address those as Creighton only? But that by having those in monthly meetings, as decisions or as information comes from this committee, as we begin to pick things back up, that provides the perfect avenue to share that information. And especially if they're getting good attendance, like the last, I understand that you had.
We were seventy-five, first, seventy-five, eighty, first meeting, we were fifty-five, sixty at the second meeting, what was it, fifty-six, first one was? Fifty-six.
And I would say it's down probably, because those who have attended the first two are hearing the same information over, and some are not coming. Because I've heard it once, you know, I, I think we're ready for new information.
Well, yeah, by, by doing that, the stuff is good. But by doing this, you're also not getting any new information out, which is what we just talked about, we gotta get new information. Now we wanna take three steps backwards and start over again. Well, how long's it gonna take to get new information? I mean, I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying you can't do it all.
I guess you don't wanna hold up the process, like you said, you've been in this for a while, you don't really wanna slow the brakes on or even take three steps back. I guess, even personally, I guess, I've gotta learn some more yet. I mean, I'm learning more about how our school works from the inside than I ever did before. I mean, just talking to Brad Hazing, I mean, he's good at talking about what he faces as challenges with curriculum and teachers, and, like you said, you're dealing with, what are you gonna do with your students in eight years? I mean, it's gonna change how your school looks. That's reality, and those are things that you don't get just from the general public. You really don't know unless you sit on a board meeting. You know, I came to a few before I got elected, and now that I'm here, I mean, I'm there, but by being part of those conversations, you get a lot more information, and I'm getting a better perspective. And I might, you know, maybe an idea I thought was Creighton isn't worth a thing, and I might figure that out for myself. You know, just through this process of being part of the board, but as time goes by, I just wanna know, would it be, would you be open to it, I guess? And not to waste your time, I don't wanna eat up an entire meeting with it, I think you could always come up with a surmise, brief description of an idea, or an idea that you wanna try and implement on your own.
I think the reason initially when we decided to go into five schools, we realized we couldn't be doing five schools talking, and then you got these two schools over here talking, you got these three schools over here. What are they saying, you know? What are they trying to do that we don't know about? So instead of trying to pull them different directions, we decided to go, that this was, it kinda came in a crap type deal. And we'd taken as far as it went, and when it broke down, if it broke down, then we would, okay, we wanna lock it, two schools, three schools, put it in there. But we didn't feel like we could cover all the bases on all the scenarios at the same time.
Thought it was too many, or the sixty-four options.
We picked the one that we thought was, you know.
We needed to have some focus.
Yeah.
And I think from the very beginning, we were cautious, it was too, too over, just because it wouldn't last overtime, and you're gonna be right back in the same boat in, in five, six years. And depending on when that other became reality, so. Yeah, what if we, we took a step back? You bring some of your issues, concern, some of those things back to this group, you know, at the next one, and spend a half an hour at the beginning and, and discuss those. You know, I think when we set the agenda, you learned a lot that day, just of, you know, the different things as, as administrators or as individual school boards beyond your district, you know, what we're facing, and trying to answer those questions.
We did, day to day, definitely, all of the schools was far beyond any sudden, I mean, you see it every day. Any deal with the kids, any deal with the state, any deal with Department of Education, I mean, and all those things, you just don't.
What is that?
Yeah, I try to know, but, yeah, I better know now. If you get on a school, you gotta know, you know, it's something, I think the late people just, you just don't know, you just have to get in school.
If we don't know both sides of the equation, it's gonna be impossible to present to the public what both sides of the equation is and what the benefits and the negatives are.
That's exactly right.
You know, the biggest thing I heard at some of our meetings, the big community meetings, is, well, have you explored other options, you know, like sharing teachers or, or L D offices? And I'll tell you from the start, twenty years of being at Wausau, we've done that year in and year out. Some with consistency and some not. It works, it's a Band-Aid, but it's not long-term.
That was a consensus when we discussed that, that we're sharing as much as we can.
So I don't know what, I mean, sport, we, we are, we've had more success with one school with Bluefield than any of the others combined. Because the other didn't have a need for it at the time. And now some, everybody has a need at a different time, a different year.
That goes to just like, we're kind of five schools that are in, three of us, I think, are in the same kind of, or two are.
Two are in a little bit different boat. Which why your, your individual meeting is probably good. I mean, your moment's coming down. Ours is stable, Wausau's stable, Ozam's stable. I'm not sure about Plainview, but I assume that's coming down pretty fast, too. So we're kind of in different places, and we gotta work through that probably individually.
You know, and I think what's different, for instance, from Creighton and Plainview compared to maybe Osmond, Bluefield, Wausau, is we stayed above that curve for a little bit longer. You know, it's like ten years longer than what you guys did. You took, you went from here to here, ten years sooner than we did. We are now feeling what you guys did years ago. And, and we're, we're trying to get used to going from thirty-five staff members to twenty-four. You guys have already done that. Osmond's already done that, Wausau's already done that. Creighton and Plainview will be doing that.
And I'll tell you, it's pain.
Because, yeah, you guys lost almost a hundred fifty students over a career period?
Well, yeah, you can go back further than that. In forty years, we've learned from class B to the two. We're back to the one now, and we're stable. But it's been a long time.
You know, and here you have Bluefield, Wausau sharing a lot. We're not sharing much at all, but we're gonna have to, otherwise we don't have those activities for kids. We don't have that coursework or those course options for kids. We're not gonna have it.
And even looking at the sharing, I think this is important for everybody here, is that you're paying staff members to drive for one period of their day. So you're not getting a full, the full breadth of the teachers' pay, basically. You're paying them to drive to their school so they can have a planning period, or have a lunch, or ask someone to not have a planning period, to be able to work at their school is effective. I mean, it's, it's not a real effective or efficient model to share stuff. It's a, like Mr. Mark said, it's kind of a Band-Aid. And it works, it works when you need to share somebody, but you also gotta know the need of sharing. You're giving up one period of their day for transportation between buildings.
Case in point, we're sharing for the first time this year. A vocal teacher with Plainview, they have her two periods, we have her two periods. But she has a point seven five contract. So she's teaching, you know, half-time, but she has a point seven five contract, plus we're paying money.
The other thing I'll say is it takes a strong individual to do D L classes, to do them right. It takes a stronger individual to drive between schools and eat their lunch on the road and drive in the winter and trying to accommodate those schools.
I asked this question, administrators here, at what point in time does the matter that driving or the distance learning thing start to affect the quality of the applicants you have for new jobs?
The quality of the applicants that we experience, we've lost some quality ones because they have to have more preps than a bigger school where they don't have to have so many preps. When they can teach three or four sections of one versus nine, ten, eleven, twelve all in math or English, makes a big difference.
You know, this is what we're gonna have to get ready to do, is when we hire a teacher, is, let's say, really math, science, English, social studies, as we go from two to one, you know, right now we're two sections of everything. When we go to one, as that individual comes in to be interviewed, they're gonna be told, you're teaching English seven, English eight, English nine, English ten, English eleven, and English twelve. You're also gonna coach volleyball, and you're gonna also coach dance, because we might need to do that as well. And the number of applicants are definitely gonna be reduced.
And probably, even, you're probably not gonna go from two to one. Because in some of those core content, you have to go to one and a half.
Well, yeah, we'll transition to one and a half first, and then we'll be-
And that's, and that's where it becomes, it becomes an issue, is how do you find that? Half, that can half over here as well, and what are those various combinations that you have?
When you have to rehire, it becomes an issue. Sometimes get there, but then you have to rehire. It's very difficult, because then you're locked into the two positions, the two endorsed areas you need. Now get them in the same person again. That's tough.
We're gonna have an art, F C S, O P A G teacher next year.
We have, you know, we have combinations that we will not replace when they retire. And they're like three years' time.
And so right now, we share staff because it works, and it's, and it's, we can do that with another school.
And we're not diluting the quality of what we deliver.
No, but we're not getting our fullback to our teachers. You know, and, you know, and we, I just can't imagine, I guess I can't, even when I went to school, a class C school, we had two foreign languages. Our kids don't have an option. They take Spanish, period. That's all we can offer. Actually, we have a theory. You know, but that's-
You know, I heard a concept today, and maybe the principals did, asynchronous, well, it's not a concept, but they're doing it. Teachers that do this would start out with their kids every day, or five, five days out of it. For the first, for the first nine weeks. Second nine weeks, they'd have four days, and then the fifth day, the kids would be on their own. Maybe wouldn't have to show up that period, would do those classes online or with the teacher that way. Third nine weeks, they'd be two days off. And the fourth nine weeks, the teacher wouldn't meet with those kids at all. And they would finish that class similar to what college does. And the consensus at the meeting today was that would be a good preparation for kids that go to college, because a lot of their classes are that way. They never see an instructor. They may meet the first week, or maybe once in between. The more I thought about it, for seniors, and it was seniors only that they did this with, it made a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, and it was one class a day.
Pardon?
It wasn't their whole curriculum, it was one class a day.
There was other level kids that could handle that.
Right, exactly.
There was more kids that were paying one class.
But the point is, if we're gonna transition these kids for college, that's what they're gonna run into. And it might be easier on, on the instructor that does this to teach, to any couple of schools.
Teaching an online class is not easy. It is extremely difficult. So if you've ever taken one of those, it's not easy to take, and it's also not easy to teach. So, I mean, that's, that's something we have to care people for. And I don't want people to just say, oh, you can do it all in class. That's not easy.
Well, I guess if we're looking at this concept of what are the alternatives, that's one of them.
Well, you can't do online with shop.
No.
Or those types.
Well, CAD you can, there's some you can, CAD we're doing.
Oh, really?
We're taking through Lincoln, I believe.
Yeah, we are taking, we are taking a CAD class.
Yeah.
But you still have to somebody monitor it.
Correct.
You know, so now you've gotta prepare it and monitor it, class, working. So, I mean, you still have extra support that has to be in your building as well. So it's not a control. But it's, it's, it's a, it's a concept that you can, and you can do some classes. If it's a computer-based class, you got it. You can try to do those things. Do the lab activities work very well by yourself? Not where you're supposed to have a partner help you build something in that class? So, and you have to send your design to Lincoln to have it done on their solid printer? And that has to go back to you? Takes a little bit of time, and it's not perfect.
Is there a lot of scheduling conflicts? Say you gotta teach your ass going between two schools and also teach or coaches junior high sport? That has to, in class, or in the school, they have to be back to teach that sport or coach that sport? Under speech or whatever, I mean, is that, is that a big issue?
They finish up, but we're gonna coach. If at all possible. It's not, it's complex, it's not, it's, it's not easy to do.
But you have like those schedules, you have like, like schedules for early hours. So, based on hearts, and we try to, we talk a lot. I mean, that's, that's a big piece, is that you have to communicate with another school a lot to make it work.
The thing that frustrates the future is, this school's got a two-hour in-service in the morning and the other school doesn't. And then the other school does in the afternoon, and this one doesn't. I mean, sometimes they don't see their kids two times out of the week. You have to have a lot of things exactly the same.
You know, the other thing is when you're sharing your staff members, and especially in electives, they might be on the road and get to that other site, but when they walk into that classroom, it's four kids, or three kids, and that's all they're standing in front of, that period, and the next period might be four. Thought it was interesting when the news came in, to interview the different school districts. You know, she walked into one classroom, and she stopped, and she took a step back, she said, you only have five kids in that class. And the teacher, actually, she goes, oh, this is great, last semester I had three.
And sometimes you have one.
And that will be coming out. K C A U, just so everybody knows, and I think everybody has, went around and interviewed in the five communities. So they have, I'm sure, hours and hours and hours of footage that is gonna be on for two and a half, three minutes. So, I have no idea what that's gonna look like, what, you know, what it's gonna sound like, what, what it is. But, you know, along that, and we were discussing this on the way over, when they stopped at, at Osmond, and we were sharing some of our numbers, she wanted to know, and this is a gal that comes from Petersburg, St. Petersburg, Florida, that graduated with six hundred and fifty kids in her class. She said, well, do you have any classes with just one student? And I go, yeah, we've got several of those. But I took her to a classroom where we went in, and there were seven students sitting there. And I asked three of the students, I said, what are you taking? And they said, we're taking CAD. And I asked one of the other students what they were taking, and they were taking advanced CAD. And then I asked the other three kids what they were taking, and they were taking communication systems. So we had seven kids in a classroom with one instructor taking three different courses. And she just, she couldn't fathom that.
You can't get young people to do that. You tell men their preps they have, and that's true.
Well, as we look to the next meeting, do you wanna come to the meeting?
Uh, I probably gotta get fully together first. I got a few other things I need to research, but, you know, maybe I'll just burn out my Wausau first, or bring it up, I guess.
Well, there might be some other new members that have questions.
I guess mostly, I don't wanna waste the time, I mean, meetings get long enough as it is, and I don't wanna burn it. I guess you don't, if I was gonna say anything, I'd hope it would be coherent and well-prepared. You know, it would be a waste of your time and a waste of my time to bring something I was absent of.
But I don't think it's a waste of time at all.
If I had to, as a local board, you know, let's just start there and present.
Yeah, and maybe, and a lot of times I find, you can, ninety percent of the questions people have are usually found out immediately. You know, the obvious things are always obvious.
Well, I mean, even if we look at this meeting here, I mean, we spent forty-five minutes recapping where we've been anyway. You know, so why don't we start the next meeting off with a half an hour of touching back, or touching base on some of the questions you have? You know, and, and I think if any of the new board members have any of those questions, you know, bring them to the table on that and try to answer why we've gone this direction.
And better yet, possibly, if you have those questions, get them to us in advance, so whenever the agenda committee is putting it together, that, you know, we'll say, ah, we'll have the answers.
Well, I just, you don't wanna retard the process and make it slow and cumbersome. I mean, whatever you're gonna do, you hope to be functional and quick in a time, I mean, nobody likes to waste your time.
But I think it's valuable here.
I was gonna say, I don't think it's retarded, because, you know, yes, you know, you guys, some are old, but there are a lot of- There are a lot of meetings out there that need to hear what we need to hear. And that's where this lack of transparency has come in. Is because there are a few here that know the answers to those questions, and you can say it's in the minutes, but you couldn't hear the discussion. And we didn't hear how you're at it. And so there are a lot of people out there that need to hear this. And if they're coming-
Don't think of it as a problem. If we've gotta slow down, we'll slow down.
I'm not thinking of it, I just, that's what we're saying.
Anytime, I mean.
That's why we voted it S B a hundred percent on every, every district.
Any new member, I, fortunately, but it is. You guys need to, if you have a concern, say it, speak it, ask it. I don't, we, we wanna be transparent, like Osmond said earlier.
We don't want something like that to fester.
Right.
Let's, let's address it, let's talk about it.
Everything's already fully transparent, or we're in trouble.
That's really how this committee got started, is there were some questions asked, and people didn't know. You know, brave enough to put them out there, and, you know, people listened, talked about it, and were able to move on. I think that's, we approve the same thing.
Uh, just to kinda go back to the website now, Bob brought this up. The website is five, and that is the number five, and then it's schoolfeasibility dot E S U one dot org. And that's everything that has been done or conducted, it's all on there. It's been up since, was it May? June of last year. And I think we've only had about two thousand and some hits on it so far, so.
Everybody has them.
There's a link to it.
Yeah, there's a link to everybody's website. Anybody else, anything else before we adjourn?
We're gonna get back to anyone other than-
Go ahead, bring it up.
Well, I guess I understand, you're basically doing this for the community, just so that they know that they're gonna be the votes. It's the main thing that you wanna do this for, that you aren't gonna make a decision without their vote.
Yeah, we just wanted to bring it to all five schools before we ranked it on them. And we would encourage that to be the case for all of us, that we don't make actions without talking to the others first, so that we can keep the transparency, that we can keep the implication going that we have had so far.
And we appreciate that, you guys bringing that forward. When do we wanna meet again? It's kind of the last agenda.
Can I make a suggestion, that we set it far enough in the future that after the February, this month's board meetings, once we know the subcommittees, the subcommittees can meet prior to the next committee meeting?
Okay, that's good.
February, March are gonna be jam-packed. Because we have to have our revision with the committee, so that's one. I have to change board meetings because I can't find a place with ballgames by now.
Oh, I was thinking, if we're gonna do it in March, we can have it later in March, so that we can at least get some-
I think we still need to meet in February, if we can.
And your subcommittee needs to have a review. And have your committee meetings, revision meetings, your subcommittee meetings. We have any community meetings at either-
I'll tell you who I can, you probably should.
I'm gonna get some more concerns areas.
Otherwise, we're fighting a bunch of meetings.
Wednesday, wrestling, basketball, girls' basketball, boys' basketball.
Girls' basketball is March sixth, um, boys' basketball is March thirteenth.
Wrestling, yeah, wrestling is the twenty, twenty-
But see, I don't think we're, then we're limited, we're not limited to a Wednesday night. Well, even during that week of boys' basketball, because there wouldn't be any, it's like, if you went there in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Everybody, probably board meetings on the ninth, or at least, we would.
The party's gonna be the week after.
I guess, third. So we need to probably, why, I guess, just because of board meetings. What's that?
I guess it's still gonna be Wednesday.
You'll be in the month, you'll be in the month by then, yeah.
Yeah, that's a Wednesday. What about March tenth?
It won't matter, we'll have a figure.
You'll have the-
So, Jeff, are we gonna, you're doing agreement that all the board will do the subcommittee work at the next board meeting?
Yeah. Is that, is that fair with everybody?
That makes sense.
I said, not that was clear, Ron, I just wanted to make-
Yeah, so everybody take your subcommittee work back to your individual board meeting.
Do you have the mastermind, Rich, or where's the?
Yeah, I, I do.
Yeah, just get a copy of the syllabus, so we know what-
I've got the same thing.
Oh, okay. We're gonna give Rich the emails here, too.
All right.
And so that way, he'll have all emails.
After you have your board meeting, you have your-
Get me, get me your group members to be on them, and I'll put, I'll put the list together and get it out to each of the superintendents as soon as we-
Some of you have two emails, which are great. We have E S U one for my two boards. And then you have another on the side. Sometimes I send it to both, because it doesn't always go through that to one or the other. Yes, that's what I found with, there's a lot of firewall issues.
I think it's, it's been pretty helpful, too, if you're not afraid to put a telephone number on.
Correct, that, yeah.
Reach a cell number or something, you can get ahold of people. Because I know within our committee, I've had trouble reaching people with emails sometimes.
Yeah, that, I actually just got the superintendents to send you here the five new members with the email address and phone numbers and-
And we'll update them.
Yeah.
And tell them, we just said that on the subcommittee, who's gonna be kinda like the chair of it, so that that person can be in charge of getting a board of people on their subcommittee. We need to probably figure out who's gonna be ahead, you know? Otherwise, we're just gonna be in the same situation. Nobody's ever gonna meet, because nobody's gonna take part.
The last time we just did it, once we had our committees, we met, we just all got together as little groups, and we just decided amongst ourselves who was gonna be the chairs.
Yeah, but that was at that one meeting, we did that. And now, it's like, are we gonna have everybody come to a meeting and decide, or how, you know, just at the next, one of these meetings, or decide out of that group, one of the people here will be the chair? I mean, we won't be able to do that, because we're not, we're, we have the subcommittees to get together before that next meeting.
And we're not all here, because everybody on the board is.
Right, right, we want us to all be the board.
Yeah, yeah, and that could be, it could be, the, the meeting could be set up by whoever the administrator is that's on that subcommittee. Be in charge, at least for that first meeting.
So sure there's a administrator in each committee.
Yeah, there is, yeah.
And we still wanna go with, when we have our monthly, or whenever we have our next meeting like this, to have, at least try to have a board member representative from each of the schools? If possible.
Hey, that would be nice, you know, and get a little feedback.
So March tenth?
March tenth?
Time, place?
Who wants to take the next meeting?
That would be, I think we skip Plainview.
No, we've, uh.
No, we've had twice, we've had, we've had two.
You've had two? We've only had one. Bluefield it is.
Cause you were, yeah, cause you were, they were the first. We go around, this is three right now, yeah, so, yeah, I think, I think we were following the original rotation, because we kinda jumped out of rotation, but I think Plainview would be nice. Cause we, yeah, we jump.
Doesn't matter.
March, March tenth, meeting.
Bob's not here.
March tenth.
Seven o'clock.
We're, we're, we're Bluefield, okay.
So are we gonna bring questions for the survey, did you want any questions, or ideas for the survey?
Yeah, you can submit those anytime to your board president, or your, wow, or your superintendent, and they can shoot them on, pour them on the paint, and then I can, it's up to you.
We'll do it if you wanna, I mean. No, Bluefield, are you doing it, is that right?
Yes, they bomb through.
Yeah, we're just making sure our calendars, we're, we're good.
Thanks. So, Bluefield and Cynthia.
How about we'll be between Bluefield, Wausau, anything?
All right, anything else? All right, we appreciate it, thank you, everybody.